Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I would like to call the November 5th, 2020 meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
I'll bat with us. Lord, we want to thank you for yet another beautiful day here in Columbia County. We ask that you look over us this evening. Try our best to make the best decisions. Best for this community and those that have come before us with all these things.
Sir, before we get started, could I ask you to remove your cover, please? Your hat, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have quorum present tonight with four commissioners. Commissioner Henderson was on his way to the meeting and discovered that he had an employee that tested positive for COVID, so we told him to stay away. And he's getting tested, he didn't test negative, so he will be here next time. Gentlemen, you've had the time to read the minutes from the previous meeting. If there are no amendments or additions, I'd like a motion for approval.
So move.
Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. We've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight. We do have two items, one that's going to be withdrawn and one we are going to be requested to table, but we do not need to change the agenda for those two items. If there are no other agenda items that need to be added, I need a motion for approval.
So move.
Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda as submitted passes four zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on November 17th, 2020 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll give you a request to speak form. For those of you that have never been to one of our meetings before, we're less formal during our meetings, so if you would like to make comment either for or against one of the issues that we're going to present in a public hearing, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the dais and take three to five minutes to give us your thoughts, one way or the other. If you'd like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda, we do have a public comment section at the end of the evening. If you have something else in, raise your hand, we'll invite you up and take three to five minutes to give us what your comment is. That being said, we'll move into the first issue tonight, conceptual plan for Woodlawn's at Riverwood, and I understand the applicant would like to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So let's go ahead and briefly go over it, but I would assume that the presentation is going to change markedly for next time, so we'll just, we'll go ahead and not present the whole file, but what you think's pertinent.
Correct, so we actually took the presentation out for tonight, since we do expect changes. So this was the concept plan for the next phase of Riverwood West. The applicant has requested to withdraw it at this time, and staff is recommending approval of the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? That will need a motion to approve, deny, or to table?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice for the conceptual plan for Woodlands at Riverwood.
Go here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Allow withdrawal passes four zero. Okay, our next item is a rezoning, it's a minor PUD revision, file RZ 201105. Mr. Butler.
Ladies and shares, a minor revision out of Lowell Water, out at Riverwood. Currently zoned, planning in development. This is used multifamily, the minor revision to adjust property lines, we'll see in a moment, it's very minor. This is the location of the property off of Franklin Ridge Road. And again, everything around it is currently zoned, planning in development for Riverwood plantation. Aerial view of the site, and also the existing site, the entrance at least, current plat. So we'll be standing here in a moment on what we're dealing with, we're only looking at this little piece of the property, it's .06 acres is what we're looking at. This is the revision, you can barely see it, but there's been a little bump out that goes right here in a moment while we're doing that. So this building here, the clubhouse, the maintenance building, and a covered picnic area, this development follows AR, Apartment Residential's building, or standards for setbacks, which is 40 feet. So you can see here it was built at about 28 feet for this one, I believe it's about the same for this one as well, so it did not meet the setbacks for those two buildings. In order to meet that, the applicant has purchased this land here, this .06 acres, from the Riverwood HOA to bring these buildings into conformance to meet the 40-foot setback. They have 41 feet here and 41.3 for the other building. So in terms of future land use, this is a neighborhood's area, this in theory wouldn't be permitted here, however, this is an already existing PUD, so this is totally fine for it to be here. And in terms of the minor PUD revision to adjust property lines, staff recommends approval of the request.
And this would not fall under our public hearing guidelines?
No, it can, I mean, if the applicant's here, they can speak about it.
Is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home phone number, or home address, or your home phone number if you want to.
Jim Trotter, I'm an attorney in Augusta, representing the applicant and developer here. 3019 Branford Road in Augusta. I don't have anything to add really from what Will said, other than these are buildings that were built about seven years ago. I don't think anybody quite realized at the time that they were over that building setback by a couple of feet.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ 20-11-01.
Go here, second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ 201101, and I believe the applicant has asked to table this till 11:19, but since it's been advertised, we still need to hear the presentation.
This is a rezoning request from S1 Special and RA Residential Agricultural out on Gordon Highway at 3157, 3165 Gordon Highway. Currently used for an old racetrack and also residential. Rezoning is to CC for office and restaurant uses. This is the location of two properties, it does, as we'll see in a moment, go into Augusta, Augusta, Richmond County, right here. And the current zoning, and you have S1 and RA, and everything around it, and you have the north is S1, you do have some more C3 over here for storage, and also a materials recommendations facility, and S1 for more industrial use. Aerial view of the site, again, the racetrack is no longer in use. This is the existing site, 3157 is the old racetrack, 3165 has been cleared of the former residential that was there. There's a plat, 3157 Gordon Highway, 5 Gordon Highway, and you can see the Richmond County line there. The Altus survey for the two properties, one half of it, and the next one will show the remainder. Well, so this proposed concept, our four-story office buildings, 120,000 square feet apiece, so about 480,000 square feet of office, this will be Class A office. One thing to mention, this plan is in no way binding to how they develop the property. That is, this is not a concept, nothing like that. That's one thing that will be addressed with the rezoning more. This does involve a development regional impact, and involves Richmond County, also Fort Gordon, that is why it's being tabled, we're still working out some of the details of those two entities, and also Columbia County. Again, the proposed concept here, again, half-minute square feet office, needs a little bit of parking, access exhibit, how access will work, and also future land use. And again, applicant is requesting a table, and staff recommends table the request to November 19.
Didn't we see this a couple of years ago, when we rezoned it for a recycling plant? Or a separation business?
The MRF, the Materials Recognition Facility, that's over here, that was 14, 2015, they had to come back for a public hearing, but I had to hold it myself on my own in 2016, but they've already built that back there.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Is the applicant here? I guess we'll open the floor if anybody has anything for or against. Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table RZ 201101 to November 19.
Go here, second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Table till November 19th passes four zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ 201102, conditional use for massage.
Thank you, sir, this is a request for conditional use for massage, the location is 7013 Evans Town Center Boulevard, Suite 201. It's on 2.06 acres. Here is the location map, it's right across from the Evans Town Park. And the zoning is C2, like most of the surrounding commercial zoning, and then to the north is PUD for the plaza. This is the aerial of the site, there's multiple buildings on this property, and the spa business is in the first property, that's noted right there. Here's some site photographs, and it is a different office complex. There's been several business licenses for massage therapies over the last five years in this building, but there has been a lapse of more than 12 months since the last one, and that's the reason why the new business requires the conditional use. Here's some photographs of the interior of the building. It is a salt cave and spa right now, so they do offer multiple health services, and the massage business is an additional service that they want to offer here. This is the future land use map, it's in the Activity Center. And staff is recommending approval with a condition, that the conditional use for massage is limited to Suite 201 and located within the subject property.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Oh, Grant, 813 Cape Cod Court, and that's Heron, Evans. And I know you had mentioned that there was a 12-month lapse in massage service, we just, they actually moved out October 1st, and we took over the lease, and we opened February 17th, but we just were told that we had to be zoned for it. So we could have actually started doing it February 17th, just to let you know, but we would love to, you know, add these services to our Salt Cave Spa and Spa, and we already do have someone, oh, sorry, in mind, and she is wonderful, she's been my massage therapist for about five years now, and is the one that I fully trust, so.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition, file RZ 20-11-02, conditional use for massage for 7013 Evans Town Center Boulevard, Suite 201.
Go here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. This is our first meeting, we have a newlywed in the house. Danielle Montgomery, would you please present, file RZ 201103?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning off Lonergan-Hill Road for a four-acre parcel from RA Residential Agricultural to M1 Light Industrial. And this is the location of the property on the west side of Lonergan-Hill Road, and currently zoned residential agriculture, as are all immediately adjacent properties, although there are industrial properties nearby off Nature's Way and off Apling Harlem Road. This is the aerial of the site, and you might notice the property to the south and west is not particularly residential or agricultural in nature, that is the G dot lay-down yard, essentially an industrial use on that site. The existing site. And the proposed concept, the intended use for this property at this time is for a warehouse space, for storage, for Hefner pools. You can see they've currently placed that near the back of the property, where its main impacts would be to the G dot lay-down yard. There is a large portion of the property undeveloped at this time with this proposal that could potentially be used for any other allowed use in M1, that would include other contractors' offices, self-storage, woodworking, and other similar uses. The M1 district is intended to be compatible with adjacent residential uses with appropriate buffering and site design that is required in our code, so as or if that property develops, those future developments would be required to meet those standards. This is within the Apling Harlem Employment Activity Center in regards to the future land use map. This is intended to be a center for master-planned business and industrial parks, manufacturing offices, and other similar commercial or industrial-type developments. Obviously, this is not a large-scale master-planned park, but it is an industrial use towards the edge of the center, and it is with appropriate buffering for those adjacent residences in keeping with the character area, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? The applicant here tonight? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Sir? You raise your hand, okay. Seeing that there's no one like to speak, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on RZ 20-11-03 to be approved, filed for.
Go here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you for a variance on the same property, file VA 201102.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to Section 90-139 buffers and screening for the same property off Lonergan-Hill Road. And the property is currently zoned RA, but as we just saw, they are requesting rezoning for M1 in the aerial of the site. Existing site. So the request is to reduce the buffer against the DOT property, as we noted with the rezoning, that is really an industrial use in character, despite the fact that being a state property, its zoning does not reflect that. With the very similar nature of the uses, staff is in support of reducing the buffer only on those south and west property lines adjacent to the lay-down yard. The buffer on the north side adjacent to the residential property would remain in place in full width as required by the code. The staff is recommending approval with the condition that the minimum buffer be 10 feet along those south and west property lines, with the buffer along the northern property line following county code. And as noted in the condition, this doesn't waive any additional requirements under Section 90-147. Again, there's a lot of this property that's not currently proposed to be developed, depending on what goes in there, there may be additional buffers for those uses. And that concludes the recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Would you like to add anything to that? All right, is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, along with the other item we just approved, VA 20-1102, I make a motion to approve the section for buffers and screening that's filed.
With the condition?
With the condition.
Go here, second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve the variance passes four zero. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 201104.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning at 418 Lewiston Road from R1 Single Family Residential to CC Community Commercial. And this property is located at the intersection of Lewiston Road and Autumn Trail, near the new Kroger development, and is currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential. As you can see to the west and the south, we do have additional C2 general commercial properties for Kroger and the related out parcel developments. To the north and east, you have additional residential properties, this is very much the transitional area. This is the aerial of the site, it is an existing house, and you can see from the large amount of empty space here, the amount of take from the road widening for Lewiston Road, this property is quite significantly impacted, both in terms of the right-of-way take and also this large empty area here, which is a future detention pond for the road project. This was the pre-road construction view of the site, and the existing site, where you can see the house from the road now, the trees cleared. And again, the Lewiston Road plans, you can see the easement space for DOT, as well as the proposed detention pond, so representing the new right-of-way and easements with the road widening. So the proposal for this site is to divide it into two commercial parcels. Currently, it would be a fast food restaurant on one parcel and a retail store on the other. You do have the DOT detention pond on the north side, that creates quite a large separation between the actual commercial activity on the property and the house to the north. And then the way the site falls, the detention pond for the project itself would be on the east side of the property, so there would be, again, a little bit more space there than might otherwise be the case. The main concern for this property is buffering those adjacent residences, particularly the property to the east, it's a very narrow site, the house sits fairly close to the property line due to that, so the, in conjunction with the applicants, we are proposing that the buffer be widened there, that it be a minimum of 40 feet, that would be outside of the detention pond, and that is already shown on this concept to meet that requirement. We're also proposing that that fence be a finished appearance to that neighbor. Any drive-throughs already have to be set back with the pond there, they're going to meet that distance easily. And in terms of future land use, this is in the neighborhood's character area, but it is adjacent to the Gateway Activity Center, which is a mixed-use center. As we've seen, these properties across Lewiston Road at the same elevation, same distance up Lewiston Road, have already transitioned to commercial development. With the detention pond going in on the north side of this property, it does kind of create a natural break from the commercial development to the residential development further up Lewiston Road. And it kind of squares up that corner where we've already allowed the commercial development on the opposite side of Lewiston Road. So though not in strict alignment with the character area map, the changing conditions in this area, in staff's opinion, do warrant support for the rezoning request. So staff is recommending approval with several conditions, most of these are mirrored from the Kroger development, the other out parcel developments to help keep the same character to the area. This first one is the buffer condition noted a moment ago, the requirement for that buffer to be 40 feet with the finished fence facing the neighboring property. And then we also have the requirements for the elevations to be, come back to Planning Commission for approval, for the sidewalk network to be included with the development, landscape strips, as has been required for the rest of the area, dumpster screening, they do have the initial dumpster locations on the site plan, but to ensure that they are screened appropriately. And signage in keeping with the master sign plan that's been adopted for this area, that condition has carried forward for all of the other surrounding commercial developments to keep the same character of the signage. This condition does also include using a single shared freestanding sign on Lewiston Road to kind of minimize the signage in the area, that was a goal of the master sign plan with Kroger, and in respect to the surrounding residences. No activity outside 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, that's following noise ordinance hours, and then directing the lighting away from those adjacent properties. Again, they are residential on both sides, so trying to minimize any disturbance to them. And then finally, with Lewiston Road widening underway, allowing the landscape strips to be put in once the project is complete. Obviously, while they're doing roadwork out there, installing landscaping would be rather challenging. So that concludes the staff recommendation.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we address the volume levels of the speakers on the drive-through anywhere in the conditions?
We don't direct, we don't address the volume, the code already addresses the setback requirements, which is intended to help with any noise complaints like that by making them be farther away from the residential properties. With this particular site, the way it's working out with the pond there, they're going to more than exceed, they're required to be 50 feet, but they're going to be well over that.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward, give us your name and home address?
Good evening, my name is Matt DeMyers, my address is 333 Fairway Drive in New Orleans, Louisiana, but I'm originally from Columbia County. Still spend a lot of time here.
Your dad Larry?
What's that?
Your dad Larry DeMyers?
Yes, Larry DeMyers, yes, sir. I don't really have a lot to add, thank you Danielle, but I just wanted to come up and ask time.
And we understand we're going to have an AutoZone and a Popeyes there?
Popeyes, for sure, AutoZone, we believe is going to happen as well. I just wanted to see, before they really commit, they wanted to know about the reason.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Who's going to be the franchise owner for that Popeyes?
RRG, and they are the franchisee for Augusta and Charleston, South Carolina. They currently have around 18 units, he's growing more in Charleston, just because he only has five stores, I think he has 12 here around the, sorry. Great franchisee, we do a lot of development work for Hardee's, Popeyes, Bojangles, Starbucks, he's clearly one of the best. In fact, I had him send me kind of a, just a list of things that they do locally to support the community. You know, they sponsor the Green Jackets, the Augusta Rescue Mission, the homeless shelter they donate all the time, Evans High School Football Team, they do the pre-game meal and sponsor, I mean, they've got a pretty large list here, but very committed and a very good operator.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Greg Conley, I live at 5129 Autumn Trail, which is the next-door neighbor, basically. So my concerns, no one ever mentioned detention pond, we've already had issues with Columbia County with the detention pond, they're putting in for the road widening, because my backyard is the low ground. So my concerns are, one, pest control, because our mosquitoes are already high, I have little kids, the noise is going to be a huge problem, because just taking down the natural woods that they did for the road widening project, it is noisy now. And then, the light doesn't really bother me, but it's mainly, how do we keep people out of my property? Making sure that the water drainage doesn't flood me out, and allows me to continue to regulate the water going to my neighbor's yard, because they are downhill. That's, that's some of the concerns I have, I mean, I'm not against it, I just, I want to make sure that we, there's a.
So we've got a fence that's going to be built, and could you compare or contrast the difference between a detention pond and a retention pond?
Yes, sir, so a detention pond would hold water immediately after a rain and then slowly release it, as opposed to a retention pond which would keep water in it all the time. So this one should be dry between rainstorms.
Yes, but which way is the water going? My, it goes towards the pond.
Stormwater system?
But right now, there is no stormwater system, ours, all of our water drains into a natural drain, like creeks. It's in the back corner, very, very back corner, I guess it'd be the north and.
You can draw on the screen.
Okay. So essentially, this area here, I have a building right here, and this is where I put the circle, that's a low ground. When I mean low ground, I mean, every time it rains, I have a natural pond in the backyard there. And Columbia County put in the detention pond, or they're in the process of building it, but what they're doing is, any water drainage goes right into that natural low area. The building is not.
On your property, the lower.
Yes, on my property. So it's just, knowing that we have a detention pond here, my house is literally right here It's just a concern.
Well, you don't think the detention pond that the county's building is going to help your problem?
That's a, that's a good question, because right now, if it rains, my, so the other day when we got all that, or, what, two months ago, month ago, we got all that rain, crazy rain, my driveway was a dam, holding water back, not flowing out our neighbors.
But they hadn't finished the pond yet.
They have not finished the pond yet, it may, it may not, I don't know.
Where will stormwater tie in?
So.
Those two detention ponds, any ideas?
We all have ideas.
Yeah, we have lots of ideas. So the property across the street, they're putting all their stormwater, probably over here, putting all our stormwater into the ditch, and sending it that way, down to the creek.
It's not going into piping?
It comes through my front yard, because I have the natural creek bed just through my front yard, I'm not, that's not a problem. my front yard. I'm not, that's not a problem. My neighbor's yard floods because they're in the low ground. And it gets, just, my concern is just making sure that the water flow proper, because if I'm regulating the water to my neighbor's yard, someone's got to regulate the water coming to me. That storm was apparent. Thank God that my, I have two eighteen-inch culverts. They were so full, so much water, it was actually, my driveway was a dam. So knowing that, you know, it's a huge, huge problem right now. And there is no stormwater, because it goes right into the natural creek. Natural creek can only hold so much water before it-
Whereabouts is the creek?
The creek actually runs-
That line there?
Couple lots down.
So there's one there, there's a man-made tie-in here, and then there's a natural one that comes across here, because my driveway snakes around.
The bottom of the hill essentially is the creek in which all of this area flows eventually to, and so-
To the next door neighbor's yard.
Yeah, I think there's two parcels between subject property and the creek at the bottom.
So your house sits in a low place?
So my house is actually on a built-up area up here. It, it's on the high ground. I have more concern with the amount of water coming across my property into my neighbors than, than, there's no, virtually no effect to my house. But the neighbor's house floods. I mean, their, their driveway, every time it rains, get more than a half inch of rain, they have water buildup. That little pond, or the creek, the green line creek, it, amount of water that's coming right now is just crazy. All the trees and houses have been taken.
That's what the pond's supposed to do, act to catch it and let it come slowly instead of all at once.
Yeah. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not against it. I just want to make sure that, you know, people, if someone is doing the proper hydrology study, because the-
How will stormwater address something like this, Mr. Sterling?
Couple of things to keep in mind, and I'll answer the question. The detention pond, the, the large pond that's related to the DOT project is being constructed by DOT. It is under construction. It is certainly not complete. That will, you know, eventually pain water coming from the road project itself. The detention pond that's shown here as part of the subject application tonight, I don't think has been fully designed and fully engineered yet. I think there's some opportunity still yet to ensure that that is handled properly. I know when we dealt with the other side of Autumn Trail, their, in their site plan, you know, they were making improvements down Autumn Trail to the creek. So when, you know, their pond was kind of up in this front corner, they were having to pipe and deal with that all the way to the pond. My guess is, without having seen the engineered plans, that that's probably something very similar for their detention pond. The release of this, I don't have good information to share with you tonight on it, but I would suspect that knowing that they're going to have to meet the same high standards, there's a release that hasn't been yet constructed in, in a manner in which that will be handled appropriately and just doesn't discharge onto adjacent properties without, you know, careful consideration. So to your, to your point, I think that the issue of the regional detention pond, if you will, DOT's working on, it's not completed, will be, you know, further improvements made to it before it is finalized. The detention pond associated with the application tonight certainly hasn't been fully engineered, and that, whatever that is, you know, site plan will handle that, and will definitely make sure that we are keen to reviewing that with a close eye.
Applicants responsible for this detention pond-
Correct.
Creating it.
That's right. Any, any onsite improvements plus any required offsite improvements to properly handle that discharge are their responsibility.
And I'm sure they want to be good neighbors, too.
I hope so.
I would think so. I mean, I'm sure they are.
Like I said, I'm not against-
They want to make an effort to do what they can do without causing a problem.
Would, would we need to add that as a condition, or?
Those are already code requirements?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to put something on a special note for the water utility to?
No, I, I, I think the applicant can easily appreciate that we're pretty thorough on that review, so I, I suspect that won't get past our folks. And by the conversation we've had here tonight, we'll make a note to highlight that for them.
Mr. DeMyers, did you have something you'd like to add?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Yes, to Mr. Sterling's point, we don't have a fully engineered site, sorry, site yet. But Pete, my civil engineer, has spoken with the county, and we are talking about piping down Autumn Trail, and then we have to run a pipe, I don't have the notes in front of me, a couple hundred feet. And we're also going to have to run sewer down and along Autumn Trail as well. So we've had initial discussions with the county. We don't have engineered plans, obviously. But there'll be a full hydraulic study on the pond to make sure it's handled both the potential AutoZoning and Popeyes. Take all that into consideration, like Mr. Sterling said. I mean, county's not-
Thank you, sir.
I think one more quick point of clarification to the difference between a developed site like this, where they're going to create a detention pond and capture that stormwater from the impervious surface, is different than the sheet flow that you would expect from a undeveloped site. And while there may be some permeation into the ground of that stormwater, there is certainly in a heavier flow, a better sheet flow opportunity onto adjacent properties. This will, these improvements will have to capture and mitigate that forward.
Right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and home address.
Jonathan Crawford, 884 Willow Lake, 30. Won't add a whole lot, just Danielle did a great job, and congratulations to Danielle. I noticed that new last name as soon as I sat down. But just a little background on this information. I'm representing the seller that lived there on the corner. They've been a long time. I've been representing them on this particular parcel for the past two and a half years. There has not been any, the first time we've stepped foot in this chamber, and it hasn't been from a lack of interest for this parcel. It was the fact that we always knew this was going to be a challenging parcel for anything commercial. But from day one, when they saw with the road widening, all those trees, as you can see, landscape has changed drastically, residential lot they had tucked there, sitting on fire. We saw the, the road widening and the taking that was going to happen for the pond to the north, we understood that that was going to kind of draw a natural line in the sand to protect any kind of residential to the north. We could sit down and logically come up with a conceptual plan to protect the residents to the east. We felt that this would be a viable option moving forward. Two and a half years ago, sat down with Andrew Strickland Castle and really put this plan together. And, and we've had a lot of interest, but developers that have come to us, we said, hey, can't do what was shown right here. You're kind of wasting our time. And a testament to Matt, when he came along, he's been very worked, he's kind of gone over and above. Like you said, this is conceptual in nature, but I must say, from an engineering standpoint, they've done a lot with regards to the survey work and the topo. They knew this was going to be a challenging site. As it relates to the stormwater detention, I've, I've been in conversations to kind of mitigate between his civil engineer, George Eastman, and to work through the stormwater. George said, yeah, we've got a number of good options. I think they all will work. And like Matt said, when the engineers get in there and do their hydrology studies, there's no reason that this, water shouldn't discharge at the same rate that it was before. So Matt's been, just a testament to him, I think he will work and make sure anything here can work out. Made a trip, like you said, he's from out of town. He's made a couple trips here, sat down with planning to rehash his concept plan, really show what needed to work here, and been open to making all the changes that are necessary to make it happen. So take note of that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to add either something for or against? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and home address.
Poling, Autumn Trail.
Would you spell your last name, please, sir?
P-O-L-I-N-G. I just have one question. Y'all get to approve Georgia DOT's detention pond drainage?
No, it doesn't-
That was part of the state project, the widening project.
Okay. Question?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak either for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Accept a motion to approve, deny, approve with conditions, deny, or table?
For Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition RZ 201104.
Do your second. With conditions?
With conditions.
Okay. Second still hold? Okay, end of discussion? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, you have the final two tonight. First is a variance, file VA 201101.
I do, and I'll probably try and take a lot of time since I gotta, my, my, my time for the dinner next time is kind of like, here for a while.
Come on.
So this is a request for a variance, section nine dash ninety-eight lists a lot of structural requirements. Remove max front subback at Evans Town Center Overlay, six ten Ponder Place Drive, currently zone P1 Professional. This is a location on the north side of Ponder Place Drive, then the Ponder Place Professional Park. You're getting currently zone P1. Everything else around it, except for to the north, which is zone PUD, is also zone P1. The aerial view of the site, again, not developed at this point, and existing site, the plat of the property, which is this one right here, and the site plan. So the issue with the, with this property and really a majority of the rest of Ponder Place Professional Park, it's within the Evans Town Center Overlay District, which has a maximum, a minimum setback and a maximum setback. So your minimum setback is five feet, so it's generally speaking around that area, then a max of fifty-five feet, which is shown right there. So the building has to touch in between those two areas. For a site like this, you could do that. There is some topography issues with it, and also there's a handful of buildings in this entire development that have been able to meet this requirement. So there really is not a great argument to stand that, you know, you must meet this setback requirement. And again, with some of the topo issues here, staff is very comfortable waiving this requirement. So again, staff recommends approval of the request to remove the maximum front subback at Evans Town Center Overlay. If you're curious what that does, basically, they have a five-foot setback now, but it doesn't make them have to meet that maximum. That concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir. Are you the property owner or the applicant? Okay. Okay.
David Lewis, eight eleven Tyler Parkway, town Georgia. All doing what you do. Bill's got a tough job, you all do. Going to build it for the client at the end of the day, balance the site, parking purposes. Natural funds that'll provide.
Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Lewis? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA 20-11-01, variance to remove the maximum setback at six ten Ponder Place Drive.
Do your second.
Second.
End of discussion? All in favor? You're on the short show? Motion passes four zero.
Yeah, quick.
And our final item for the evening, Mr. Butler filed VA 201103.
This is a request for a variance, section nine dash one forty-four, place some buildings and structures to prevent a fence retaining wall over six feet in height at twenty twenty-five Grace Avenue, currently zone R2, residential. This is a location on the property. You can see it's been under, under construction. And again, currently zone R2, everything else in the state of Jones Creek is zoned the same way. Into the north, you have Jones Creek itself, which is zone plan unit development. The aerial view of the site, also the plat, property right there. And the existing site, again, it's a, a house under construction. So what we have, we have a retaining wall. I will see it here in a moment. This is the ASB build, so the, let's go back one, one, or not go back, but let's go back a little bit in terms of how we are looking at this thing. If you go back to the ASB build, I'm sorry, I'm being very confusing. So what we have is a retaining wall that's shown here. The maximum height of it is about six feet five. A four-foot tall fence is planned to be installed on top of that wall, which means it'll be an overall height of ten feet five at its highest point, which would be in this corner. So we have, your setbacks are here, terrible line, but you do see that this point here is over the line and over six feet in height, and then the same on this side as well. So that's why we're doing a variance for this. So we'll kind of walk around the site here in a moment, kind of look at everything that's been constructed already. This is coming from the north side of the site, shows the existing wall. Again, there's no fence on top of it, so there will be a four-foot high fence on top of this wall here. Just walking around the edge of it, looking back towards Jones Creek, looking out towards the other side of it. There's a pool that's here. I will kind of talk about it here in a moment, why they have to have a fence. And this is the other side of it, on the south side of the property. Then now we walk around the backside of it. They do have a topography issue. I'm walking very carefully on the side of a hill picture. And this is the highest point of the wall at this point. Again, it's at six feet, six five-ish, give or take. This is a site plan. Again, the pool is here. They do have a fence that will be on top of it. They have to have that from a building code standpoint. And this kind of illustrates the overall design of it. And this is a rose fence, a louvered design aluminum fence. And again, staff has recommended approval with, with a couple of conditions. One of the things with the application, they did say that they would paint the concrete above grade, so we've kind of, we're proposing a condition to hold them to it. Also, the fence as well, to match the fence they'll provide with the application. And we're only given the variance for the existing retaining wall and for this fence, so anything in the future will have to meet those setback. That concludes staff recommendation.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? It's Bogus.
Yeah, Bogus, five one six Roundtree, Evans. I don't want to talk too long. Glad I hear for supper.
Well, actually, what they do is they have a bet on how long the meetings are going to go, and whoever wins gets to pick dinner.
Stop sandbagging. Come on, move this along.
Okay. Am I helping?
Got twenty minutes.
Winner buys or just picks a place?
No, it's just they get to choose what we have for dinner next meeting.
You can't talk, you might be, you might be invited back next time. We'll see. Who's the winner?
Sounds like Will's got a particular time he's going for.
Move this along.
Anyways, I'm building the house for Ray back here, me and his wife Janet. We're actually putting a different type of fence on top. I was just going to do it. Wanted to put in a pool, in a site plan, on the wall, actually started the wall when this, it actually had concrete columns going up, imagine during a rain, mud that were doing, all built, all painting wall to get the, so anyway, so we had to stop that process about halfway through and try to reorganize to figure out how we can keep this thing setbacks, but it turned out that we weren't. Other thing we did ask, I think, changing things and whatever, and, you know, kind of this thing kind of fell between the cracks, and we actually started and contracted this wall. In order for him to get this thing like he wants it, it cost about another ten thousand dollars to get the guy out, trying to get him in this house by Thanksgiving. Iron on top. Possibly get this.
Okay.
And it's another issue is it's- Up over the wall.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to a motion, either for, approve with the conditions, deny, or to table? Well, I tell you, before we do that, I mean, I guess I better read this in. I did have a neighbor that sent this in, and this is to Chairman Cox. I'm writing to express support of the variance request made by the residents of twenty twenty-five Grace Avenue, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine, for the height of their fencing. We are the closest neighbor to the west and reside at one oh five Robbie Court, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine, and ask that you approve their request. Thank you for your consideration and for your services as a member of our county zoning and planning committee. Sincerely, Jason and Jody Lott. And Jody is the House of Representatives member for this- And Jody is the House of Representatives member for this area from the one hundred and twenty-second district, and also serves as the governor's floor leader in the House of Representatives. So with that being said, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to deny or to table. You know, I don't think we can address the fee. That'd be have something the commissioners would have to.
Commissioner would have to waive that.
To do that. So, so that's out of our purview here.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions filed V A two, zero, dash, one, one, dash, zero, three, variance to increase the allowed height of the retaining wall and fence at twenty, twenty-five Grace Avenue.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Question?
I'm not going to win, that's fine.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries three, four, zero. We have no text amendments tonight. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Henderson abstained from the meeting tonight to protect the health of all of us present. Do we have any public comments or participation? Will, you sure you don't have any comments? You don't want to give us.
I'm not going to.
Filthy for the next fifteen minutes?
I'm not going to filth this for.
Right. That being said, the time for adjournment is upon us. Do I hear a motion?
No, no.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn at six, fifty-one. Thank you for coming out. Next meeting, November nineteenth at six P M. in these chambers.
That's what Jennifer guessed.